Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission. This evening being Monday, February 24th. The hour is 5:30. Thank you for starting on time. I will call us to order. And in lieu of a prayer, I'm going to ask that we have a moment of silence for Commissioner Rick Sears, whose mother recently passed away, and for the community of Danville, who has dealt with the recent passing of a bright young mind and bright point of energy for this community. And as we all try to wrestle with his untimely passing. So if you would join me in a few moments of recollection, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Now, those of you that are normal attendees to the city commission know that for the pledge of allegiance, I always try to make it a habit to pick out somebody new, especially when they are about to retire. Oh yes, I am talking about you, Mr. Harmon. Mr. Carl Harmon, would you please come forth and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, help him up the steps.
Help him up the steps. Come on up here. Come on up here. All right. Lead the way.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you give him a pen, sir?
I gave him a key to the city.
Okay, there you go. Carl, we know you're not going too far. Commission, you've had time to review the agenda and I will assume that it meets with your approval. I would ask, after the hear of the public, I would ask for your indulgence to add Magistrate Jamie Gay, who's going to introduce a wonderful young lady that is spearheading our local effort on the census. If that meets with your approval, fine. Then we'll move right into hear the public. This is the public's opportunity to speak on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. You'll have three minutes in which to do so. There'll be an opportunity later on in tonight's agenda to do the same about any item that is not on this evening's agenda. With that said, is there anyone that wants to take the microphone? Seeing none, we'll move right on. I'd like to introduce Magistrate, former Commissioner Jamie Gay, if you'll do the honor, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's also good to see the friendly faces of the Center College Soccer Team here in the audience tonight. I extend my, as you all are soon, congratulations to them on their great season. I want to introduce Ms. Dani Rogers, who is our partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau. She has been a tremendous resource for our Complete Count Committee here in Boyle County as we're working to make sure that everyone counts and that everyone gets counted. And so she is our local expert on this issue. So she's the one that I call and I would encourage you all to call as well if you have any questions about the upcoming 2020 census, which is really probably the most consequential thing that will happen this year in 2020. We live with these numbers and these results for 10 years. So Ms. Dani Rogers. She also, by the way, is fluent in three languages. I always like to tell that on her. I tell her I struggle with English, but she speaks Spanish and Japanese.
It's up for tonight's presentation. She's going to deliver it in Japanese, is that right?
Yes.
Welcome ma'am.
Thank you. So I hate having my back to people. Hello. Can I move this?
You can move it, sure.
Don't make me do my choreography in a minute.
Yeah, you can walk around with it. Yeah, you can take that walk around.
I know. I just want to say thank you for letting me come and speak really quickly. I just wanted to remind everybody that this is a year that ends in a zero. And as a result, every 10 years, we do what's called the census. And the census is a count of everybody living in the United States. The goal is to make sure that everybody is counted so that over $675 billion given out every single year by the federal government comes back to the communities that need that money over the course of 10 years. So whatever numbers we do capture here in 2020, we're going to be using that number for a budget for the next 10 years. That's why it's extremely important that everybody be counted. For the very first time this year, we are able to do it online. So if you are like me and don't like people knocking at your door, great, because you can just go online, get it done in four minutes, and nobody's coming. Okay? So you can do it online, by phone and by mail, on your own, starting the week of March 12th. You'll be receiving something in the mail that has a personal passcode for your house. And that passcode, you go online and fill it out and you're done. Fill it out however, for everybody living under that roof. It says household, that can be a bit misleading. People think just people in your family. Everybody living under the roof needs to be counted. And it'll hold up to 99 people, so I mean, if you got that going on, that's something else. We don't particularly care. That's on you. None of our business. It'll, you know, we'll send you another form if you need one after that. It is secure, so please understand that any information that you give us, we only ask nine questions. And you probably have a lot more information on social media than anything that we will ask. But the questions that we ask are like your name, your address, how many people are living in the home, what are the names of those people, what is the relationship, your phone number, only because if you leave something blank, we will need to be able to call you and say, hey, did you mean to leave this blank? But for no other personal reason. We are not going to ask you your social security number for financial information, your mother's maiden name, nothing personal, okay? All of the information that you give us, because we are under oath for the rest of our lives to protect it, by Title 13, it's protected. So that means that no law enforcement agency can use it against you. That means landlords can't get a hold of you and your 99 people in the house. ICE can't get it. Homeland Security can't get it. Local police can't get that information. It's forbidden by law. Another thing is that it's private for 72 years. So anything that you do give us, for 72 years, nobody's seeing that information. We strip it of all identifying information, and it's all stats by the time it leaves our department. And the most important thing I always say is that anybody who has taken the lifelong oath like myself is under the penalty of five years in prison and $250,000 in fines. And I'm too cute for prison, and I'm not going, and neither is anybody else. So your information really is protected, okay? Let's see. You will have about five different reminders that you can go online, by phone, and do it by mail on your own from mid-March all the way up to the end of April. In May is when people are going to really start knocking on the door and saying, hey, remember that thing we reminded you about for five times and you didn't do anything? We're just trying to get those answers. So from mid-March all the way up till July 31st, you can do it on your own, but we will be sending people out in May just to try to collect that information so we can be completely done by the end of July. If you are on campus, living on campus, chances are you will not have to do one individually because we have an operations that's going to be working with housing on campuses and other group quarters like senior living facilities and detention centers, and I'm not equating any of them or anything like that, but just, you know, places like that. So we'll be having a whole operations team that will reach out. However, if you live off-campus but are away at college, you will be receiving something in the mail if you have a residence. So that means fill it out for yourself and everybody, if you have roommates, everybody living under that roof. If you are a parent with a student living away from home, make sure that you do not count them because that splits the money that comes back. So if your student, you know, God forbid, breaks their ankle away at college, do you send the ambulance to your house or to the student at college? That's where you want the resources to go. So you want to make sure that you're not counting the student at home as well as them being counted on campus because it splits the resources, okay? I'm trying to think. Top groups of people that typically don't get counted are kids under the age of five, kids under the age of 10. You have other hard-to-count communities, communities of color, non-English speaking communities, veterans, seniors, rural communities, lower income. There are a host of different harder-to-count communities. So we really want to make sure that everybody gets counted. If you have this information, spread the word. We're going to have a lot of different community organizations that are going to open up their establishments with computers so that people can come in and fill it out if they don't have the ability to do it on their own. We want to have as much volunteers' participation as possible. You can speak with Jamie about that, okay, and be a part of that Complete Count Committee. Is that okay?
That's right.
Okay, I put you out there anyway, so. One way or the other, reach out to him. My phone's going to be off on the weekends. Y'all can call me, but I'm not going to listen to it on. So I'll get back to you on a Monday if you call me on a weekend. Other than that, I'm thinking, that's about it. No, it's not. Because we're going to need people knocking on those doors. So for $16 an hour, 58 cents a mile reimbursement, weekly pay, full-time, part-time, and flexible hours, you can work with us. It's very easy. You go to 2020census.gov. Yeah, I see y'all smiling and grinning and stuff now. Yeah, now you're listening. 2020census.gov/jobs and apply online. Super easy. All you have to do is be 18, be a U.S. citizen, pass the background check. Background check is not as creepy as it sounds, it's just the fact that it takes the longest. So do it as soon as possible so you can get in the system, okay? 2020census.gov/jobs, $16 an hour, 58 cents. You can pick your own hours, so it's great for retirees, students, athletes, okay, and people who have to work around like a kid's schedule. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
The purpose of this, the big picture of the ordinance is what?
The overall goal is that because of the money, the resources that we need for transportation, if you don't like paved, well, if you do like paved roads, if you don't care about anything else like government assistance or housing or all these things that are funded by that's over $675 billion, it still affects you on a day-to-day basis because we all still use hospitals, we all still use schools, and whatever numbers we capture, like Jamie said, are going to be used for the next 10 years. So if we have an inaccurate count, for example, if you have kids, I have dogs, but if you have kids and they show up the first day of school and they got counted, great, there's a budget for that. But for the 200 extra kids that show up that didn't get counted, for the next 10 years, there's no budget for them, okay? So things like that are going to be the way that it's affected. We want to make sure that the over $675 billion comes back in the right amount that we need to have to cover the people who are using those resources.
So was it 10 years ago, at that census count, whenever it was, that Kentucky actually lost a representative in Washington?
We lost a seat back in 1990 was the last time we had seven. And we've had six consistently for the next census, sensi, sensai? What is the census, census? So we have the opportunity to potentially gain a seat if we have a population increase and it's decided that the over 435 seats that are available in the House of Representatives can be redistributed based off of the numbers of the population. It also helps with redistricting. And so a lot of your local officials are really keen on making sure that we have these accurate numbers because it can mean sometimes you lose certain elected officials or you gain more elected officials based off of how the population booms.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
In the case of shared custody of children, how do parents do that?
Wonderful question. So April 1st, 2020 is census day, but that's not the only day that we can do the census. It's just like a landmark date, okay? This is where you're going to gauge wherever you are, six months and a day out of a year. If you split your time between your mansion in Florida and your mansion here in Kentucky, right down the middle, wherever you are, April 1st, 2020 is where you need to be counted. If you have split custody with a child and they're half the time with one parent, half the time with another parent, wherever they are, April 1st, 2020, that's where they need to be counted. Same with foster kids, wherever they are, April 1st, 2020, that's where you need to be counted. That's kind of like a default. If you just can't decide where do I need to be counted, wherever you are, April 1st, 2020, that's where you need to be counted. Other questions? I can handle anything.
She can.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Do you want me to leave these here for people? Okay. So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Y'all with the jobs and everything, I see y'all didn't bring anything to write down, but that's okay. Oh, okay.
Is Carl Harmon still here? You'll be looking for work.
Yeah, Carl, you're about to retire.
Jamie, thanks for bringing her. Dani, thanks for coming. All right. Item one. Gentlemen, arise. Come down front, please.
I did.
Y'all gather around, I'll write down here. Where'd he go? Come on in here. Come on in here. Y'all look like census takers to me. Everybody look good for the camera. And while you're doing that, gentlemen, I will read a, Coach, come up here, please. Right here, get right in next to us here. This is a proclamation, 2019 Center College Men's Soccer Team. Whereas the Center College Men's Soccer Team had an outstanding year representing Center College and the community, the city commission would like to congratulate them on their outstanding accomplishments in 2019. And whereas the Center College Men's Soccer Team ended the regular season 13, 3, and 1, finished second in the Southern Athletic Association, then went on to play in the Final Four of the Division III NCAA Tournament. And whereas Center Men's Soccer Team finished their play, finished their season 20, and 4, and 1, they displayed resilience throughout the postseason and finished the season with the highest ranking in the program's history. Whereas the Center College Men's Soccer Team players are outstanding role models to the youth of Danville and Boyle County, all members are applauded for their exemplary attitude and contributions both on and off the field. And whereas the Center College Men's Soccer Team members and coaches are shining examples of focus and dedication to be the best they can be as a team, coming together to accomplish great things, they are to be commended. Therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Danville on this 24th day of February 2020, do hereby congratulate the 2019 Center College Men's Soccer Team on their historic season and encourage the citizens of Danville to congratulate them on their success and representation of Danville, Kentucky. Gentlemen, thank you. Have it a hand. Coach, come over here. Come on out here. Come on out here. Come on out here. Let me present this to you. And I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Anything you want to say.
I'll let my captain do the speaking.
Yeah, he sprung this on me. I didn't.
What's your name, sir?
Patrick Farrell. I'm a senior captain for our team here. We just want to say thank you for being so supportive of us over this year. And, you know, part of being at Center College means being a real part of the Danville community. And so we felt the full support of Danville and are really happy to be here. So thank you.
Glad to have you. Why, you got the microphone? Any stories you want to tell on anyone?
Let me look around the room first. I don't know, I might have to pass it off if one of you guys got one. I don't have one that comes to mind. I don't want to embarrass anybody here.
All right.
I might be for another time.
Hey, Coach?
Yes?
Coach?
Yes.
You got to say something.
Well, it was obviously a great team to coach. We had, I thought, tremendous leadership. Who are seniors here? Raise your hand, seniors.
About a third, half.
So who do we have? Tate Johnson, James Warner, local. Raise your hand, James. Yeah? Who else here? Obviously Jack Gaynor, Cayman Philatral, Nick Mazzarella, Patrick Farrell. Is that it? Yeah. Obviously a great group of seniors here and really kind of took us over the top.
Well done, gentlemen. Thank you for coming and appreciate that. And I'm sure you're welcome to stay because if you don't, there's a big hole in this room. But if you have to go study, we understand this. Thank you for coming. Yes.
If you wait about 10 minutes, there'll be cake.
True that. And if you wait 11 minutes, there'll be no cake.
Wow, look at that.
It's just like church. Everybody in the back row. I knew that was going to happen. Do I hear a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you for Mr. Atkins. Thank you for Mr. Cottle. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Item two. Is Earl here?
Yes. He's in the back.
Earl, bring up our guest.
Well, it is, it is not with a lot of happiness, but also, but at the same time, I'm very happy for Mr. Carl Harmon. And see, Carl G., as we lovingly refer to him, I could talk a lot about Carl. We've been in a lot of tricky situations. We appreciate having people like Carl that know a lot. We say that we can rely on, we can, we drank a lot of coffee together trying to figure something out, right? Like we held a lot of coffee cups so we would think slower instead of trying to rush into something. But I could talk about Carl for an hour, but the best thing is Carl would always make you laugh, and I'd rather him talk because I'm hoping that he can get some laughing out of us. Because he, you're rarely around Carl that you don't smile or laugh at something, and we generally spend a lot of time in good humor. And I want to personally thank Carl. I sincerely appreciate him. He's taught me a lot, pulled me aside, and I thank you sincerely for being around and helping us learn. I appreciate that. And so I want you to talk. I get out of the way.
You've got the mic. It's open mic now.
Yep.
Our best memories is ice storm 2000 overnight. That was, that's about all you can say. I really appreciate the opportunity to finish out my career here at the city of Danville. Everybody's been good. I'm going to miss a lot of people, but I just want to say thank you.
Good for you.
Yeah.
So my first introduction to Carl was breakfast. Carl looked over at me, said, you know, I'm leaving you. And I said, was it the eggs? Whenever you lose a tenured employee, it's a huge knowledge drain on the city. I have heard the stories. I've actually even laughed at some of the third and fourth time they've told them to me. And it was a lot of coffee drinking. There was nothing in that coffee. They assure me that.
That you know of.
But, yeah, we know of. Don't smirk too bad on that one. But the reality is, employees like Carl are the heartbeat of this city. They're the folks that go out there and make it happen every day. The things that we take for granted every day are because of employees like Carl that will get up and sacrifice and give day and night. And I think on this ice storm, they were telling me they were up for like four days, if I'm not mistaken. And it's like, and just be tired, but they do it for you, the residents, day in and day out. And for that, Carl, we're losing an employee with a lot of skills. They've already told me I got a budget for four people. And I says, is that because he eats so much? Because I saw him at the birthday breakfast. Big platter. But it's the skill set that he brings. And for that, that's the priceless things that we lose, plus everything that's right there that we can't download that he takes with him. So for that, congratulations. Come on back. There's a certain amount of time. He knows I offered right there at the table. You can rescind that right now. You can hand back that resignation letter. You don't need to retire, did I not?
You did.
Yeah. You saw where that got me. Thank you, Carl.
Yes, sir. No problem.
And the tradition is to give a nice knife to you, to whittle away the wood you're going to do. There's something wrong with this picture. Carl and I were classmates.
We were.
He's retired. I'm not. I'd say you got the better end of the deal, pal.
Ah, it's a problem.
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy for you. Will you come back and see us?
Will do it.
We need you around here to keep things light.
We'll be around. We're not going nowhere.
Well, the one story I remember was, I think it was last winter, there was a big water breakout on Lebanon Road. God, it was cold that day. And I didn't know who was over there. I just thought, man, these people are down there up to their neck in this ditch in this freezing cold weather and water's flying everywhere. Because everything from that point west had no water. No showers that morning, folks. So appreciate what you did and what you mean to this community and what you mean to me personally, classmate. You need to start showing up at class reunions, you know that? All right, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, Carl.
He's a good one.
We may not do this, but I start, so if the commissioner will come down and take a photo. When someone has put this many years in, that's the least we can do to show you the haunts of your memories and remember why you're here. Here's supervisor, come on, give him this photo.
Come on in. Now, do you have anyone special in the audience, anything? Or did you come by yourself? You got Carl Junior with you?
I got my wife with me.
Come on, wife. Come on, wife.
Come on.
This is, this is his moment.
All right, come on, let's get in tight. Let's pretend we're on a team here. Come on. I'm going to suck it in if you will. Carl Junior's for everybody.
There you go.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Come back anytime.
All right. That's fun. All right. Item three, years of service recognition. Mr. Milliron, floor is yours.
We're going to postpone, sir, until he can make it.
So be it. We'll move right on to item four, which would be a banner request for the Quanis Club M4K Fest. Is there anybody here from the Quanis Club? Mr. Becker, welcome. And we can make this pretty quick. I'm sure you have coordinated with city staff on all of this.
I have been told that that has all taken place, and we look forward to having the banner displayed. The M4K Fest is musicians for kids. It's going to happen March the 28th. The program we have lined up so far is Travis Lee Kern, Kobe Langham, Blue Group Jazz, and our headliner is Power Play. So far, we have monies donated to take care of most of our costs. There is a seat admission at Gravely Hall. It's all five bucks. And you also have in-and-out privileges. It's going to run from 4 until 9 o'clock. Along with that, at 8:30 that same morning out at the park, we're going to have a 5K run to also help raise funds for the kids and the special seniors that we work with all year round in other organizations. So that's kind of where we are. And so the banner having out here at city hall is huge for everybody that's able to take advantage of that. So we're seeking your all's approval to have that.
I'm assuming the banner has met all of the specifications of our banner ordinance? Somebody?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Staff has reviewed the application and is recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Is it a 5K or a 4K?
It's actually a 5K. We almost did the 4K, but we just feel like everybody needs the extra effort.
Oh, of course, yes. Well, in that case, Kevin will run and we'll jay-h.
And I'm going to run too.
I'll take the cab.
I'll, I'll take the cab. I will move for approval of the banner request for the Quanis Club M4K.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries, look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item five is the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, those meetings being February the 6th and February the 10th. At your convenience, Chair will entertain a motion for the approval.
I'll offer a motion to approve the minutes for February the 6th and February the 10th, 2020, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six is the Certified Local Government Annual Report for 2018, 2019. We have with us Ms. Joni House. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, how are you all this evening?
We're fine, thank you.
Wonderful, I think maybe this is the first time I've been in front of you since I've been back, so, good to see you all. I've recently sent in the Certified Local Government Report to the Kentucky Heritage Council, which is required for our certified local government certification. The reporting period was October 1st, 2018, through September 30, 2019. Some highlights, I'm assuming you guys have that in front of you, but some highlights of that, basically, I had to, of course, resign on August 30, 2019, as I retired from UConn, North Kentucky, and had to go by their rules to when I could come back to work for you, which was around the 27th of December, 2019. So, thank you for having me back, I appreciate it. The Danville Architectural Heritage Board heard seven COAs, which were certificates of appropriateness, none of which during that time were denied. There were 11 staff approvals for certificates of appropriateness during that reporting period, all of which were approved. There has been no revision to the design guidelines during the reporting period, there were no new local landmarks which were named, but there was the addition of the Magority Avenue Wilderness Road District that was officially recognized on March 7, 2019, and the Thomas Barbie House, which was recognized on June 26, 2019. All current members of the DAHB served the full time for the reporting period. I will say that our biggest accomplishment this year was all of our board members received the training that they needed, that is a vast improvement, and the majority of that was done through the local workshops that we held through a grant for the Certified Local Government, which you also greatly appreciated that you approved that. We did recognize Historic Preservation Month in May by a city proclamation from UConn folks, and that was how we recognized Historic Preservation Month. In January, we did adopt some following goals that you all have, but I think probably the most noted one of those is public education sessions that'll specifically be held to deal with the Historic Preservation District and public art within that district, which has been of some issue here recently. I think we've got a good handle on that, I've met with the city attorney and, and a lot of folks, and we will be starting that quite quickly. I'm sure that you're gonna be hearing from the city manager very soon about getting together for a meeting for that. The specific thing that they wanted to address was the redoing of our design guidelines, which is Section 6.33, which specifically deals with the design guidelines for public art in the historic district. So that will be coming to your all's full attention here very soon. Basically, we had a great year, everything worked very smoothly, and I'm glad to be back to assist you all with this process. And I'll stay right here since I'm next up also.
You're next up as well, yes, ma'am. Are there any questions from Ms. House on this material? I can say there's one person I look forward to this discussion forthcoming, thank you. And the next will be item seven on our agenda, which is Resolution Number 2020-02-24-01. This is the 2020 Certified Local Government Grant Request, continue on, please.
As you all well know, that we are working on some public planning and preservation planning for our historic districts within the commercial zones downtown. The Lexington Broadway National Register District has about 100 structures that have not been surveyed for national register status. There are about 25 of those buildings that were, that were classified as non-contributing the last time the survey was done, it's very possibly that they may now be contributing structures. It is necessary to resurvey the district in order to provide data for the preservation planning, specifically when we get into planning for public art. This will specifically help with that planning process. The budgetary impact on that, the total grant will be about $10,300. As I've spoken with folks, it's going to be around $7,000 for that preservation surveying. We will do a lot of that with some volunteer and staff, which will provide about $2,800 worth of match, but in essence, it's gonna cost the city $1,300 to get that resurveyed, which is a pretty good price tag, and it's something that's much needed for that. If you look at the Lexington Broadway District as it is now, it's a very distinct piano key pattern, because there's a lot of things that are not surveyed there. And this may well lead us into being able to expand that district as well, so, but specifically, we need it for preservation planning, on what is an contributing building in that district and what is a non-contributing building in that district. So basically, we're asking for your approval for that grant. You have, I believe, the narrative in front of you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer that for you.
As much as it is expenditure funds, it does require a motion, do I hear such?
I'll move. Go ahead, Mr. Atkins.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2020-02-24-01, as presented, is that right?
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cottle, thank you, discussion, were there questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries, we thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Julie.
Item eight is Resolution 2020-02-24-02. This is the fiscal year 2021, Commission Goals and Objectives.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to get the conversation started, I move for approval of Resolution 2020-02-24-02.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a discussion?
Give me a second.
A second, excuse me. Yeah, sorry.
Now you can discuss.
Yeah.
Now you can have discussion.
All right, we are in discussion, thank you, ma'am. Comments?
I was impressed that you were able, or whoever was able, to sort of compress everything we talked about into, into some key points, that was a sure a task. And I think, it appears to me anyway, you got the, all the big ones we talked about are, are on here, so applaud your effort.
Is there anything on here that, let me ask it this way, is there anything that is not on here as a result of some omission, or, because there's a lot discussed that day? I can't, I can't see anything or, or think of anything. Anybody else?
I think, I just refer back to Commissioner Cottle's comments, is that there are a lot of things built into each one of these statements, and I think the other thing is that they're not listing any priority, they're not ranked in any way, they're just a listing of things that we agreed upon. Good work, Joe.
If there's no further comment, Chair called question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine is Resolution 2020-02-24-03. This is the purchase of a 2020 Ford Expedition XLT 4x4. Do I hear a motion for that approval?
I will move for approval of Resolution 2020-02-24-03.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, we are in discussion. So what we're doing here is trading in a vehicle, does I understand it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there will be a trade-in of a 2015 Chevy Tahoe. They have inspected the vehicle, this vehicle is at the public works set for surplus. The information that I've given is because of the wear and tear and heavy on it is why we're having to surplus it, but we are getting a substantial trade-in value on that vehicle. Because the vehicle looks beautiful, don't get me wrong.
Yeah. What will the surplus process be, in case people?
That's an act of the commission that we are trading it in and getting equal or greater value for it.
Yeah.
So you are getting a dollar-for-dollar value back, as opposed to putting it out on auction and taking whatever the highest bidder gets.
Okay.
I was pleased that it was a local vendor, for sure, that's great.
Yes.
Great news.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion will carry. Item 10 is Resolution 2020-02-24-04. This is the Employee Broker and Consulting Services. Do I hear a motion for that resolution?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-02-24-04, as presented.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am, we are in discussion. Mr. Milliron, you, you led the effort on that, would you like to deliver a summation, or you want to do that later on?
Well, the background's included in the packet here, obviously, the city issued a request for proposal, which was stated in a public meeting that we would be doing so in order to evaluate the insurance brokers of our healthcare providers. We invited three of the six to come back on February 17th for oral presentations, which were heard by the management team from two of the six. Our current provider, elected, who was a semifinalist, chose to withdraw from the process on Valentine's Day, not that that's significant, it just happened to be February 14th, so I decided to say Valentine's Day, they showed us the love, and that submitted the proposals. So after reviewing the oral presentations, the management team scored the vendors on five criteria, and the overall scores were Strong Side Solutions 568, the next was Johnson and Pullman 332. Now, it is important, and I always like to say disclosure's the best thing, Strong Side Solutions has followed me, I've worked with them at three prior cities, but that had nothing to do with the actual scoring. I deliberately and intentionally excluded myself out from any of the scoring process, that was 100% done by the management team. The reason is that I didn't want folks saying, "What's going on here?" Interesting enough, the Georgia firm found out about the RFP from a Kentucky bidder who apparently Googled my background, wanted to find out what's important to me on insurance and cost cutting, and he found out about the bid and he submitted one. So there you have it. But that said, the, the whole process has been open and transparent, we also published on our website the submittals, and then we, of course, had the oral presentations. At the end of the day, we selected the vendor that we believe in the city's best interest is about cost containment, being the most vital of the selection of the broker, followed by generating better benefits without raising cost, strategic partnership with the city, general broker services, and administrative support. So this is a recommendation for approval.
Thank you, sir.
I, I guess the number one question is, this brings about substantial benefit, cost savings to the city and to our employees.
Is that a question or a statement, sir?
I think it's a little bit of both.
The, in, in the entire review, I've sent the commission multiple emails over the last six weeks on, I have, I've gone through, I have literally trolled through hundreds of pages of data on Mammoth requests that were all funneled through our CFO and, and delivered to me. At the end of the day, cost containment was not happening, and either they weren't in the driver's seat, or I wasn't. And as I explained it to the management team, is that I don't go to the owner of a stock and say, "I want to buy your stock," I go out to a broker and I say, "Get that stock for the best price you can." You are there to work in our best interest. And so, whatever rhyme or reason in the past, you, companies can provide unique or innovative things, but we saw that our prescription costs were going up 27%, we saw that our overall healthcare was up 20%, and this was despite everything the previous city manager was putting in place. So you want a broker that is brokering benefits and bringing advice to the table and cost containment. But moreover, you heard from the staff, I certainly have heard from the staff, is that customer service is not meeting anywhere near par. The staff is very, very frustrated, and, and I have heard them loud and clear, I put the RFP out, we assembled a team to review everything, and then come forth with a collective. So, as, as city manager, I'm recommending that we move forward with this company, and certainly, I know them very well, I can show you success stories at all three cities. I was also on, did presentations to the Lieutenant Governor's Task Force of Georgia on healthcare, and this company is also working on a plan to put forth for the state of Georgia to take over their healthcare containment, and it should have a, a, a big B on savings. So again, yes, we think better service, lower cost, and then we will need to roll that into our total compensation package when we look at pay and the budget and benefits and how all that blends together with retirement.
So, yes.
I'll say yes.
This is looking forward to next year's, or is this gonna be something we can?
Broker will engage immediately, probably tomorrow, based on y'all's vote, if y'all vote move forward, I'll do the agent of record letters tomorrow. And we have a renewal that's coming up first of May, and then we're going to have to implement. The goal is not to cause disruption, meaning we already have existing healthcare, so let's start managing that, and then as, as it makes sense, tweak and change where it doesn't cost, cost any real issues, cause any issues, not cost, cause any issues.
Any further questions or comments?
I just want to thank him for his work, because it's been quiet and things down, so move forward, yeah.
If there's no other questions or comments, Chair will call the question, all in favor of the motion and resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, oh joy, the budget calendar. Mr. Milliron, continue on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is a copy of the proposed budget calendar, I previously had distributed this, asked for feedback, I think there was one or two tweaks, but this gives you some transparency into the city manager's budget and creation of the budget that'll come forth to the commission. I am definitely challenging staff to, my expectation is that the budget ought to be a tad bit more creative and, and, and more understandable and digestible by the public, because at the end of the day, you're the fiduciary responsibility, and they ought to really, truly understand and see where we're spending the money. So when we make the initial presentation, I'm not gonna say there's gonna be a dog and pony show, because animals aren't allowed in City Hall, but we'll, we'll, we'll make do.
So, one of the noticeable differences here is that as far as the commission is concerned, our meeting days appear to really start on April 23rd, special call meeting?
You'll actually have insight by that, but yes, as I recollect your actual, I will present it to you in the final form at that meeting on the May 26th. will present it to you in the final form at that meeting on the May 26th. It's up to you whether or not you do first reading. You may throw it back at me and we'll then have optional meetings and iron out our differences. But I'm trying to stay on the same page, which is why we've got the goals and objectives before you so that I know what is your priorities in the budget. And then my priorities are making sure that I can implement those goals and objectives and keep the employees happy as well. Because happy employees get things done like tinkering potholes.
Any comments or questions?
The agency presentations sometime between March 26th and April 3rd. That's typically a meeting that we have and we hear those. Is that the way that's going to happen this year? And if so, I'd really like to narrow that down to a specific date.
There's a reason why that's sort of kind of vague. I've got that packet sitting on my desk and so I'm struggling right now as to, in fact, I asked the mayor today, it's like, hmm, what do you think the will of the commission is? And so I've asked him to sort of start reaching out to you all because I've got to make a delicate balance here in a very, very tight time with your pension costs that have gone through the roof, our healthcare costs that have gone through the roof. We have a compensation study in play and I have a recruitment and retention issue. So I've got some conversation that I want to have with the commission and that's why that hasn't been narrowed down. The packet is sitting on my desk, but it's probably best if y'all individually take me out to lunch next week.
And I will be in touch with each of you individually and we'll just have a conversation to see kind of where.
I'd like to wait back into that.
You're not taking us to lunch?
No, you're taking me. Yes, Kevin, I'll take you.
I do like the idea of the report or the budget being more citizen centric and something they can digest and read because I'm sure those that do take the time to read it are often as confused as I am, so I think that's a, that's a good step.
We're going to take a crack at it.
Any further comments or questions? All right, sir. Item 12, if you will continue with regard to Mop Dog, marketing strategy and talent acquisition.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I was going to actually wear a mop on my head for this presentation, but I thought that that would not give me executive presence, which helped get me over the edge of the hiring. So with that said, I'd like to invite to the podium William and Cheryl. They are in our beautiful town of Danville. I'm going out to dinner with them tonight. Feel free if anyone wants to join us, shop local, shop downtown. But I thought it would be good that you see the face behind the collaterals that will be developed at my request for the city so that we can take a sort of holistic look at marketing and retention at the city. I'll let them go through some of their initial visit and then I'll make another reference to them during my city manager's report. So with that, and then I'll reverse myself. Cheryl and William, welcome.
Yes, well, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the wonderful city of Danville in this very important initiative on workforce, talent recruitment, and also retention. And our goal is to, over the next day, we'll be initiating and kicking off our efforts. We'll be meeting with multiple city department heads and also a lunch and learn session with a number of city employees that's being arranged. And then also we'll be completing an online survey in conjunction with the, with Mr. Randy Boyd, with who's in charge of the HR manager director. And so over those, over the next few weeks, we'll be completing our first initial phase one, which will be reviewing all the information and doing these surveys and also gaining the feedback from city employees in order to see what are the top challenges and also what really are those unique value points for a person to work for the city of Danville and really to help it shine. And from there, we'll be creating then into concepts and coming up with messaging and then also with how do we visualize that they'll be able to be utilized. And then last but not least, we'll be developing tools that can be implemented on this local level to continue those efforts forward. So that's kind of our process and just FYI, we are based in Georgia and we've worked with the state of Georgia, with the Georgia Municipal Association for all the cities across the state of Georgia and have also worked locally with a number of city municipalities and other municipalities that have also been connected with not only city but also county efforts too. And so we look forward to working with you and all of the, the team through the city over the next number of weeks. And Bill, would you like to add anything else about Mop Dog?
We did go to Harvey's for lunch, it was very good.
Good.
I recommend the pork pulled nachos, but get the fries.
Any questions, lady and gentlemen? I guess the question I will have is, so this effort is confined to the city, we're not trying to create workforce programming, packaging for the community at large. This is germane to our organization, our employees, and our ability to attract employees.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
Is there a timeline, will there be a tangible product at the end of this or what kind of the timeline?
Yeah, there is. I think we should work in three phases. Phase one, I think, is up to four weeks.
Yep.
Then the concept we have up to four weeks and then implementation, I believe after that is within a six to eight week period. And this will be something we're coming back with you that represents the city of Danville that kind of solves the issues that we'll find obviously doing our due diligence and then give you guys back something to actually use with recommendations, files, creative, you know, and kind of outline how to use it.
To add on this, so this is a multi-tier marketing retention plan. So the collaterals and the basis and foundation that they're giving us will be for social media, for print, for our website, all external communications, internal communications, promoting our employees and the greatness of what they do for us every day while at the same time helping to recruit.
Which sort of answers my questions is what are you going to do with this and who are you, who does this go out to and who are you targeting?
Well, you start tomorrow.
Sort of answered that already.
Right.
Randy, have you worked with a company like this before? Have you been here long enough to really, I mean, to help them along and see some weak spots?
I've worked with a couple of different agencies. I mean, I come from the staffing industry prior to my experience in industrial, but it does help is getting marketing materials because that is one of your key things is to really, especially in this tight labor market, is getting candidates to get that initial interest in the city. One of my initiatives too, along as David mentioned, is a tiered program is not only with the recruitment, but also developing a good, and we talked about the commission retreat, a good onboarding platform that we can retain employees. So it's something I'm going to be, you know, discussing with Mop Dog and we'll hopefully have a good collateral program between, between the two. Hope that kind of answers your question a little bit there.
Randy's been, God bless him, first week he rolled up his sleeves. He's been reviewing all of the questionnaires, collateral, everything, sort of backstopping us. We also took the questions and rolled it out to our management team, had them give us insight feedback. So it's been quite the collaborative effort to get them on team, on site. Tomorrow they'll be out meeting with various departments. Tomorrow we sort of have, I guess I called it a lunch and learn, but they'll be talking with folks in great numbers tomorrow and they'll also then be meeting with the management team tomorrow afternoon. So they've got a quite a busy day ahead of them tomorrow and we were able to save on travel because they were passing through Danville on the way back. Someone with a wedding, I believe, had to drive a car. So I'm like, hey, you're on the way, we're not that far from 75. So come on and I'll get you before the commission, then you can do all this on Tuesday.
Yes. Timing is everything.
So on the phase three with respect to the marketing and communication strategy, the ad campaign, you all will be developing that, implementing that. It won't take staff time necessarily to do that?
They create the collaterals and then we handle placement through HR.
Okay.
So for instance, as positions come up, you'll see us be doing create a placement. So, so think of it this way, for breakfast, they have brought all of the ingredients to the table and they've, and they'll give us the recipe to put all that together and show us. I have worked with this firm, in fact, I was on a test force in Georgia, which is why when I got here and realized, holy cow, we have this, I knew exactly who to call right away because the equivalent of their, our Kentucky league here, same thing there. We had just gone through this process and in fact, I think you saw in my submittals and questions when you hired me that this was, this was the project I was working on. I just wasn't able to give a lot of specifics to you at the time because there was three of the cities piloting it. And so we are tailoring it specific to Danville and trying to be another one of our firsts to get out ahead and get you thinking first about Danville and coming to work. But at the same time, those collaterals are also going to showcase the great things that our current employees are doing. So that's the messaging. I think we will raise it to a whole new level here in Danville.
Look forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. If we can do anything for you during your stay, let us hear from you. Item 13, continue on, Mr. City Manager.
All right, so certainly you heard, Waxy, before I get there, let me reflect on Friday morning. Friday morning I woke up, it was 17 degrees here in Danville. I thought that surprised me. I look at the weather bug. But as I was, I had to make a quick run, so I was up a little earlier than normal. I'm coming down Purple Road towards the city and this garbage bag blows off of the back of this pickup truck. The fella stops, makes a U-turn, comes and parks at a safe location on the side of the road, gets out and is running towards the garbage bag. At which time, I was the first car in, I slowed down, put my four ways on and said, well, I'll stop the cars behind me. The fellow coming at me did the same. There's about 20 cars now backed up and everyone's waiting for this one fella to pick up this garbage bag. You don't know what that means to me coming from Atlanta. There would have been 20 cars that would have already run over that garbage bag. There would be garbage all over the side of the road, spun everywhere, and that guy would have been long gone as the next bag fell off. So I say that because that's the Danville that I fell in love with. It's those small little tidbits that are the difference about what this community is. And so I wanted to point that out. So moving on to serious business, certainly want to thank Cheryl and William. They'll be focusing on the citywide. Tony Diastoli, the videographer, he took note to the fact in the paper, it said, a videographer, and he's like, I'm the videographer. Okay, I know you got more regional Emmys to shake a stick at, but come on. So, but he's with TD Media Services, he'll be meeting with the police, fire, and 911 communications at the latter part of the week. His role then is to create those pilot recruitment videos. Those are three areas that we are getting hit hard and we've got to raise the bar quick. We've got to get, because you just don't go out and hire a police officer unless you can steal one from someone else and then you're usually ponying up a lot of money. So you've got to get them in the recruitment, you got to get them through the mandate school, and then you got to get them through your field training and then you can sort of set them free. So we've got to start that. So we're going to be very unique and we hope that we set the bar high for our fellow cities throughout Kentucky and they take note of what we're doing. I've told the fire and police chief and the head of 911 communications, think of this as like Donald Trump in The Apprentice. So we're going to put all three videos up there and the management team's going to get to pick which the best video is. So that's the charge, you have to be creative. And that's, that could mean lots of things. But at the end of the day, we have a special prize for whoever, whichever department wins the best. But that's all subjective because they're being judged by their peers. But just the same, I'm looking for great things. We've been meeting with John Bell, with Parks and Rec, we've been integrating that organization with Team Danville. I'm very proud of the staff and the amount of work. There's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes, sort of bringing in a, an entire agency into your city and bringing them into the fold, all the way from IT to HR to communications. Randy was like, how many employees do they have? That's a lot of onboarding. But it's a big process and we've brought them into our management team meetings, we've got them a city email, we are treating them like family at this point because you just don't hit a switch July 1 and say, we are one. So, so very proud for the team of the efforts there. We are working on the final throes of a request for proposal for solid waste and also for the auditor. I suspect in the next couple of weeks, those will be out on the street. And last not but least, the DAHB Joint City Commission Meeting, if you'll mark it on your calendar, they, based on all the feedback, it will be March 3rd, March 3rd at 9:30 a.m. and you'll be getting formal communication on that. But that concludes my city manager's report.
Any questions for David? March 3rd.
Did you say 9?
9:30 a.m. Majority rolls.
Super Tuesday.
Is that going to be like a all morning, all day? Do we know?
That's a good question.
Till we get done? Does anybody know?
I will be surprised if it goes less than two hours. There's a lot to discuss.
We can leave and come back, right?
Yes, you can. You can also order takeout.
My doctor wouldn't let me sure it would take out, but well.
All right. Anything else, sir? Okay. Then we will move in the section I mentioned earlier called Hear the Public. Public's opportunity to take three minutes at the microphone, the podium to address any subject that we have not discussed on tonight's agenda. Mr. Bell?
Still haven't gotten that knee fixed?
No. MRI tomorrow. My name is John Bell, Director of Parks and Recreation for the Danville Boyle County Park Board. And as the city manager mentioned, Parks and Recreation is coming on board to be a city department as I think most everybody in central and eastern Kentucky is aware of. So I am, I am the deliverer of a challenge. This is coming from the Parks and Recreation Department as we currently exist. I am spreading this to the commissioners and as my staff has pointed out, that I will also be partaking in this, that I can't just pass the buck on this one. But I will also, full disclosure, say this comes from a current sitting city commissioner, not just myself. And I will let full disclosure take its course up there. Last year, we had 451 boys and girls participate in our T-ball, softball, baseball program. I am issuing the challenge from the Parks and Recreation Department as a community challenge to the commission. As it sits, that if we hit 500 registrations, that's an increase of just over 10%, that the city commission, upon their agreeing to this, I know that the mayor has said many times that the commission does not address during the public speaking, so you have commissioner comments right after this, that you can address this. But if we reach our goal of at least 500 children participating in our Parks and Recreation T-ball, softball, baseball program, that during- Parks and Recreation T-ball softball baseball program, that during the National Night Out, which is a national program, it is August the 4th, is a Tuesday evening, that Parks and Recreation is cosponsoring with our first responders, being the police, the fire department, and EMTs. We're having an event, Whisker Park, from 6 to 9 that evening. Once again, it's called National Night Out. You'll see more information come about for that event. But during that event, you will pay off your challenge if you so decide to accept it and not cower behind anything. But once again, this challenge is from Parks and Recreation to the commission if you decide to accept it. This list will grow, but these are merely suggestions that have been given to me.
Your three minutes are up, sir. Thank you very much.
In that case, I'll submit it to the paper and let them issue it.
Let them do that, yes.
Yeah, he's not the public.
You can shave your head. You can accept a pie in the face, possibly wear a dress for a day, including the commission meeting, kiss a pig, go vegan for a week, or sit in a dunking booth that night at the National Night Out.
Oh, man.
This is an ongoing suggestion list, but it will be one that you can agree or not agree to participate in. Thank you.
I thought you...
Since the full disclosure, cat is out of the bag, I say that we shave her head.
Now, wait a minute. I did submit this to John Bell. I said, "I'm willing to do anything but shave my head." I will wear a dress for a day.
Yeah, and I'll shave my head for a day.
Yeah. So what happened was I saw on social media, a neighboring community parks director had agreed to certain things, and it was things like, you know, no internet for a day, going vegan, you know, it was certain things. I know, right? So I sent it to Mr. Bell, and I said, "I think we should do this to help you get your enrollment up and to welcome you into the city and the new changes." And again, I said, "I'm willing to do anything but shave my head." And I said, "I think my fellow commissioners need to be challenged as well."
Can we ask a question about this whole proposal?
You're going to sit up there.
Oh, I...
Wait a minute, we're not supposed to respond. Go ahead.
I want to respond. No, I think it's great, and I will commit to doing it. I already know I'm going to be out of town the whole week doing that time for you, but no, I'm just kidding.
There you go.
Well, my question is, why are you going to Parks and Rec committee meetings making suggestions for the commission? That's my big question.
I didn't go to a meeting. I...
Oh, you did it?
No, I just sent him a message and said, "I think this is a good idea."
Is there anyone else that would like to come to the podium?
That sounds great, though.
With any great ideas.
And I'm also extending this to our magistrates to join in.
Ooh, it deserves.
Is it going to be a fundraiser? You going to turn this into a fundraiser?
Yeah, I've been there, done that, too, though.
I say, I will say this, in the other community, they had a community member step up and said they sponsored 25 kids this year.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, it's to promote... It's to promote Parks and Rec and enrollment, and I think we...
Have hot dogs. Have a hot dog eating contest.
Well, it's got the whole event, but then, you know, people can take out some of their stress on us over all of this by throwing a pie if they want.
But that is truly a community event.
Yeah.
So we're looking into doing all kinds of things, involving a certain magistrate that keeps trying to get in with suggestions.
Yeah, oh, yes. The magistrates are invited to participate. And I think there should also be, you know, if you exceed this goal, you know, there should be levels. You know, we meet our goal, it's this. If we exceed our goal, maybe it's this and something else, you know. So...
So if you exceed your goal of 500 kids, the court member there might decide he's going to pledge a dollar per child, up to 500.
Over 500.
Over 500, up to 500. Yeah, okay. So a lot of ways to make, okay, I'm in. Not shaving my hair, though.
I'm sure people might even pay to throw a pie in your face.
They might pay to shave his wig, but I'm not letting them.
So we can decide between now and then what the payout will be.
We will know May 1-ish, we've reached our goal, so you have three months to decide your payout.
Hey, I just came up with a brilliant idea. It just happened. So what you do is you put those ideas in a big old basket, and they're in envelopes, and you pull out the envelope, and you say, "Accept this envelope, or if you contribute $100, $200, $300, you get to choose another envelope," or something like that.
Yeah, a lot of ways, yeah.
I'm not shaving my head either.
I'm thinking that can be a big fundraiser. I have no problem. I'll shave my head.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What's left of it. Chief, don't hear. He'll shave his.
Thank you for the time.
It's for the kids.
I will provide police officers in uniform. I'm sure people will line up to throw some pies.
Pies, dunking booth.
That's pretty neat, though. I like that.
So that's a yes from you?
Yeah, I'm in. I'll be out of town, but I'm in.
I'm in.
Rick's in by default.
So three months, you say, from now? That'll give me just about enough time to shave my legs, so.
Too much information, thank you.
So I can wear a dress. I don't want to have hairy legs with a dress on. What?
Moving right along. Anyone else?
Someone else?
I think we've had enough for the... Would you please come forward, please, ma'am? Oh, okay, all right. Yes, ma'am.
I'm here for the kids all over Danville. You know what I'm back for, like the water splash. Could y'all move that up this summer? Because they worrying me to dance. I can't step outside.
We will ask our...
Wouldn't it be nice if they wanted to do something still, being out there doing the wrong thing? And put new equipment, and it's a big old stand. They still ain't moved that, Mr. Bell. You seen it?
Oh, Mr. Bell. She's a Mr. Bell.
This is John Bell. You know that frame I showed you that was on the playground that need to be removed for a little kid might play with it and then file on?
We met down there today and made out a list.
Okay. But I'm back for the water splash because they want me there.
So noted, ma'am. Thank you.
All right.
All right, all right.
I appreciate that.
You're so welcome. We're going to have you sergeant at arms.
Yes.
Yes, I can see that one. Item 14, well, excuse me, then back up. Commissioner comments as if we haven't made enough.
Mr. Randy Boyd is here with us for his first official meeting.
Welcome, sir. Any other comments?
Couple of things. The Boyle County High School Key Club is having a shoe drive next week, so if you have any gently used shoes, they are taking them for their resource organization. So, I don't know. It says no heels, wedges, or fur lined boots, so that could pretty much cut you out, mayor.
It does. It does, sorry.
And you only have two pairs of shoes, so that leaves you have two, right?
But I got one pair because I'm wearing it with a dress.
And then the other is, this Friday is the Tiny Art Show at the Art Center, Art Center of Bluegrass, and local artists such as our very own Denise Terry have created artwork which will be for sale. And tickets are $10. You can get them in advance, and each piece that you purchase is $20. So it's a pretty good time. We have a lot of talented people here, and then there's me.
And then there's me. I'm fully prepared to buy my art back.
That starts at 6:30 on Friday, if you have a chance.
And you did one as well?
I did.
Mayor, did you? No?
Oh, I got several things. Real quick.
I think Rick might have done an art, too. Sorry.
Oh, I did an art piece, too, but it's in my garage. Let me display it. Today, in case you've not heard, if you've not been listening ready, you still got some time. It's National Aretha Franklin Day. They've been playing Aretha Franklin, good old music all day long.
What channel? Satellite?
Oh, any channel, probably, but I get mine on series, what, 48?
Forty...
48? So...
Forty-nine, forty-nine.
Forty-nine, all right. But also on a more serious note, this coming Thursday, the Danville Boyle County African American Historical Society has their fourth in a series of Black History movies, and it's a longtime favorite of mine, it's A Raisin in the Sun. So it starts at 6 o'clock, and they have free popcorn and Kool-Aid. They get it from the rec department, right?
Ms. Calhoun be front and center.
Yeah. And then this Sunday, all across the United States, it's the 55th anniversary of Bloody Sunday, the Selma Bridge Crossing. And so they're doing a reenactment. I invite all of you all to Frankfurt this Sunday at 2 o'clock for Kentucky's first reenactment of the Selma Bridge Crossing. Line up at 1:30 and cross the bridge at around 2 o'clock. And then there's going to be a program highlighting and reflecting on voting and the importance of voting and the census. They vote now this year. So Selma reenactment, Frankfurt, Kentucky, this Sunday at 2 o'clock. I sent lots and lots of notifications out because I finally got some real PR about the exact lineup and all that kind of good stuff, so.
Anyone else? Time to move right on to item 14, payment of the bills. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I will do just that.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion.
Need to read the amount you're proposing.
Yeah, the amount is $208,483.29, of which some $10,000 goes to the Kentucky River Authority for water we don't use. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries. Item 15 is Resolution 2020-02-24-05. This is a EDA grant opportunity. I don't believe I see Mr. Coffey, so I see Mr. Castle. Please, sir. That's right.
I like it.
We like it. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 2020-02-24-05.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. How about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion.
Good luck.
Great opportunity, yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries. Is there any need for an executive session tonight?
No need for executive session, although I do have to request that the city clerk update the names of the commissioners. There's been one name change.
There was a boating accident.
Due to a boating accident.
I have no idea what they're talking about, but you all have done so. If there's no other business to come before us, all in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
Did you make the motion in second? Did you make the motion in second, right?
Yeah, well, that's all right. What the hell.
I'm okay with it.
That's right.